All right, guys, it looks like it's 3:30. And we're live on YouTube. Hi, Shelly Ingrid, Charlie. Steve can't see you, Paul can't see you, but Tony, but. You're there. Hello, everybody. All right. Our first agenda item today is Glenwood Canyon Emergency Management.
If you would, Jonathan, I'd pull over Terry and Gary, probably Jessica. And Matt and Todd, I'm CDOT, that's what I'm thinking.
So like everyone.
Did I miss anybody, Terry, to pull over?
It looks like the only people I have in is somebody named Gould. And Jessica Bowser. Everybody else is a Gould.
And I'm thinking, Jessica?
Yeah, Jessica as well, she's, she helped me with the traffic numbers.
And I think you can take it away, but I just, I think what the plan is, is to go over the Canyon Emergency Plan. Come back and have a different conversation mostly about. South Glenwood, it's just that the. West Glenwood, it's just that the Canyon Emergency Plan came out. And we know it's really important for you guys to understand it because the canyon will probably close a couple of times this summer. So with that, I'm going to hand it off.
And Jonathan, is it okay if I share a screen?
Yeah, of course.
Can you guys see that?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
No worries. Good afternoon, council. Gary and Chief Darris and Matt and I have spent. Quite a bit of time with, with CDOT and with Colorado State Patrol and with the Forest Service. Trying to develop a plan to close the canyon in the event that we have debris flows. The summer with the, with the rainfall. We are anticipating that we will have debris flows, as you know. We have very large burn scars out there and we have. Reports that indicate that, you know, there's a large potential for debris flow with, with moisture from the canyon or in the canyon. I have to say a special thanks to TJ Blake. And he's the Deputy Maintenance Superintendent for Region Three for CDOT. He has spent a lot of time coordinating a multitude of, of different people from CDOT and. Different agencies, the Forest Service and Colorado State Patrol to help us develop this plan. So with that, I'll kind of lead off with. And Gary's online too, and you know, he knows just as much about this plan as I do, so Gary, jump in if I've, if I've missed something.
Terry, excuse me, but could you please put that into full screen like slideshow view?
Yes, I can.
That makes it much easier to see.
Yeah, let me see if I can get it to, is that better?
Perfect.
Okay. So, you know, when we first started talking about this, our, our greatest concern was to try to avoid what had happened. With the Grizzly Creek Fire initially. Where we had traffic really back up in town and then we didn't have the ability to. First of all, get anybody out of anywhere as well as our emergency services had a hard time getting in and out of their. You know, the different locations where we have emergency services, so. We really felt strongly about trying to get this process started and luckily CDOT was very helpful and, and helping us coordinate this. So. You know, initially, we, we wanted to move traffic or keep traffic from moving into Glenwood from the west. So, you know, we do have closure gates that exist at mile post 116 in the center of town. But when those closure gates go into effect, it really does cause quite a bit of backup in, in town, so. With this plan, you know, our, our western closure point we would like to move to and have agreed to move to. Mile post 109. It is a secondary closure point to 116 because we already have gates there, but CDOT is, you know, putting in new gates at 109. The western closure point is mile post 133 at Dot Zero where we can turn people around. So there are, these are the, our procedures for closure. You know, you can see that there are multiple steps and luckily NOAA has been very involved in helping us determine, you know, how to. How to monitor this and they are, you know, sending out or, you know, sending us alerts that'll help establish some of these, these points. So the first one is a flash flood watch and when, when, you know, NOAA determines that we have a flash flood watch, CDOT will have equipment. And personnel standing by at 106, 116, and 133. So then flash flood advisory and CDOT will set up a left lane closure at the 109 exit to start to channelize traffic there to prepare for closure. So when we have a flash flood warning, then, you know, all kinds of alerts go into place. A MAC channel is established for communication between the Colorado State Patrol, the Hanging Lake Tunnels and the local agencies. CDOT will go ahead and close I-70 between Glenwood Springs and Dot Zero, the 116 to the 133. CDOT will also close eastbound 109 as the secondary closure point after the 116. The canyon will be swept by CDOT, Colorado State Patrol, or local law enforcement. Hanging Lake Tunnels will become the incident command post unless they're forced to evacuate. If Hanging Lake Tunnel evacuates, incident command will be reestablished in CDOT at the Glenwood Spring, at CDOT, at the Glenwood Springs Office. CDOT will begin monitoring Independence Pass for commercial vehicles and metering traffic on Independence Pass. And then the truck parking at Dot Zero will be used for short-term commercial vehicle staging. Eagle County will be notified to begin closures of Cottonwood Pass. If we miss a forecast, if there's, you know, a really fast-moving rainstorm. Or an immediate debris flow or rock slide, closure points will be manned by local law enforcement until CDOT can respond. This is a lot of information, so does anybody have a question about this before I move on to the next slide?
I have a quick question. Do you allow for commuter traffic, like Glenwood to Newcastle kind of stuff with that 109 closure, or is everybody pretty much stuck on either side of that?
So it depends on whether it's short or long term and then I have a slide on how, how those closures will go. Let me move to that slide and then hopefully, let me know if that, if you still have that question.
Terry, quick question?
Sure, yeah.
Sorry, if I might raise that button, but. Is this any flash flood warning, we're gonna, we're gonna start closing down the highway?
So there are steps to this and. You know, they, it's, these are based on weather reports and watching from NOAA, so it's. You know, we, we will, you know, react to actual weather events. Now, does it happen with every weather event? Yes, it will with, you know, with these stages and. I'm.
This is TJ with CDOT, you want me to help you with those?
Yes, please, thank you.
So we have it set up with NOAA with the, and with the bear team at the US Forest Service. And their recommendation is anything, we get a quarter inch of rain in 15 minutes on the burn scar. Point four and 30 or point seven five in an hour will trigger that flash flood for just, just the burn scar. So we're talking the forecast, NOAA was gracious enough to give us a forecast directly for the burn scar and nothing else. We should have, should have a pretty good job to be able to pinpoint when those, those storms hit the burn scar. We're hoping we don't miss any, but those are our trigger points, so it isn't for any flash flood, it's any that hit. Those parameters set by the, the US Forest Service bear team and when they, when they believe the threshold hit that we have a flash flood. Debris flows.
Thanks, Todd, that answered my question, thank you very much.
Any other questions before we move on to the slide? Okay. So if the closure goes past two hours, is that correct, Todd?
Yeah, or we know it's gonna be, or we know we have a huge debris flow and realize that we're gonna be shut for a while.
Yeah, so the closure points will change and we'll start to push back to the west to Mam Creek at exit 94. Will become the eastbound turnaround point only. No use of the frontage roads, well, our county roads will be allowed. CDOT will stage gates to assist and Garfield County will assist at this closure point during the business hours only. CDOT will implement another closure gate at Eagle on the east side if needed. We'll move eastbound closure points back to mile post 116 to allow local traffic through. So that's the answer to your question, Paula, that local traffic will be allowed through in a, in a longer-term closure. Access change, so if we do have a long-term closure, we recognize that, you know, there needs to be, or perhaps needs to be some. Movement of emergency vehicles and law enforcement through the canyon. And so that will be allowed if it's judged to be safe. So. I think that our incident command team will evaluate that. So this is the public messaging or information plan. In the short term, as soon as road closures are implemented through the canyon, Hanging Lake Tunnel will begin messaging closures to all affected local agencies. As well as to the message, to message boards to the Utah State Line. As well as to Denver for the westbound travel, no detour information will be posted in the short term. In the long term, after two hours, messaging to the Utah State Line and to Denver will change to include detour information. CDOT's PIO will start statewide messaging on all of their social media accounts and loop in the local cities and counties.
Terry, it looked like Shelly had a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Terry, I had a question on the clearing of the canyon, does that include evacuation of No Name?
Not at this time, you know, yeah, the. The county has been working with No Name and. I forget the other agency, but they've determined that for most instances that. You know, there may be some shallow flooding that will occur in No Name, but they won't. Unless we have a very serious incident where we lose the culvert and, you know, they should be able to stay in place.
Okay, is there a specific trigger event that would trigger evacuation of No Name or?
If you don't mind, Terry, I'll jump in here. At this point, no, shall we? The, the, the assessments by. By, well, but with Bornhold, with the county and the. Of course, I had to lose, draw a blank on the other agency. But they, they assessed that whole drainage and they, they feel like that. Even in a pretty significant rain event, there's very little threat to life safety for the residents of No Name. There may be, and they're gonna be doing a little bit of sandbagging here early, early May on some of the lowest line. Residents on the south side of the freeway. But. So there may be a little bit of property damage potential, but no life safety threat, therefore no evacuations planned at this point.
Okay, that's good to hear, thank you.
And I believe Gary, the agency was NRCS.
There you go, yeah, that one. Thank you.
Okay. So the bike path and the rest area closure, you know, we do have a lot of our commercial outfitters and a lot of. You know, our residents that like to get into the canyon and raft. So for a short-term closure, the areas will be closed the day before any rain event forecasted to be 30% above the chance of a flash flood watch within 24 hours. River guides and outfitters will be allowed to ask access the closed rest areas at their discretion with assigned permit from CDOT. And the river guide and outfitters will sign up for emergency alerts from the Hanging Lake Tunnel through a program called Everbridge. And then the bike path and rest areas will open as soon as the threat of an event has passed. If the canyon closes, you know, the river guide and outfitters won't be allowed through. Any questions about that? Okay. So, you know, we recognize, as Deborah said earlier, that, you know, this, this plan really addresses the closure of. You know, the canyon to the east of Glenwood Springs and we also recognize that, you know, the closure of the canyon to the west. Also creates, you know, its own set of issues and so, you know. TJ Blake has agreed to help us try to coordinate with other agencies, you know, to our, our south to begin looking at, you know, what. Happens in town if we do have a closure of the canyon to the, to the west. And so these are some of the things that we're hoping to do here in the near future. You know, as I said, we'd like to continue the collaboration with all of our local, our partners here. As well as to hire that deputy fire chief to help us develop the emergency operations plan. These are some of the things that we would hope to include in an emergency operations plan. You know, obviously the hazard identify, identification, risk reduction plans, designation of the incident command structure. Emergency Operations Center planning, internal and external agency contact lists, evacuation plans, and then public communication plans.
So I'd like to tag on right there. Until the Grizzly Creek Fire and, and not without a great deal of effort from, from Todd, from CDOT. Have we ever been able to get state patrol, county, local PDs? CDOT, everybody focused on, on an issue, on a road closure, so. This has been a great first step in ongoing emergency planning and evacuations. So I think TJ sent out a thing this morning, looks like we're probably gonna have our first meeting regarding the whole. West side of Glenwood closure coming up here April 13th, 14th, somewhere right in there. But now that we've got all of these people. Corralled, if you will. We can make some really good progress on these types of plans because as you might imagine, shutting down. I-70 at the 116 and at the 133 is primarily something that CDOT. And state patrol have been able to handle, but when we start moving closure points back further to. Minimize traffic in Glenwood Springs and, and some of the other communities for that matter. Then we start needing support from the county sheriff's office, from the local PDs. And. Getting all of that, that coordination going is, is no easy task. And I'm so grateful for where we've come with this canyon plan and I'm so, I'm optimistic now that. That we can make some, some plans to help avoid some of the confusion and the problems we had in West Glenwood, for instance, last year when we. When we had the, the 111 fire. Just West Amy's Acres out there, so. It's a great first step, but we still have a ways to go on some of the other plans. This plan. I think we could all agree, it's not perfect, it's, it's a great start. And the first time we have to execute it, we'll probably find a wrinkle or two, but it's great to have. Hanging Lake is the perfect incident command post for this. Either at the tunnel or if they do have to go remote in Glenwood. Where they can actually monitor. The cameras that they do have throughout the canyon once we can clear. Human beings out and let mother nature take its course, then, then we just go from there, but. Huge protection of, of life safety, so. But there's gonna be some inconveniences, as you might imagine, you've already asked a couple of questions and. The other one is, is, so I was talking to Todd this morning about. The Hanging Lake hikers. And when we get some advance notice that there might be a threatening storm coming. How we try to. Can, you know, how we convince those hikers that they probably shouldn't be up on the Hanging Lake Trail. On any given day and get the ones that are up there down off of there safely, so. A lot of wrinkles. But huge progress. So, questions?
Anything? Shelly?
Gary and Terry and Todd and everybody, thank you so much, I, I think that. Really helps us to understand what'll be going on in the canyon this spring and summer. I, I had a question for you, Gary, and more just for our future planning for Glenwood. I understand we're gonna be looking at hiring a deputy fire chief, but. What, what do you think we can get in place before fire season this year? Is it, are you optimistic about plans that we can get in place this year and some of that coordination, or is it going to take longer?
Well, I guess it depends, it depends on fire season, right? I was just, I just got the, the newest 120-day outlook for weather and fire danger and I haven't even had a chance to. I mean, so I, I digress, fire season could start tomorrow. We anticipate that the worst of fire season is usually, you know, June, June, July, August and beyond. I believe that now that Todd has done such a marvelous job of assembling the right people. That we're gonna be able to start some conversations here in mid-April and, and before June have. At least a draft. A, a, a plan, if you will, for another closure of I-70 west of Glenwood Springs. That one has always caused us some significant. Issues, but you know, and, and part of that one includes closing Highway 82 and. And that, that's a different group of players now, now we're talking about some up to and including Pitten County, but Carbon Dale PD. And some different folks are now. Affected by a closure of Highway 82 south of Glenwood, but we have come to the realization that it's just, it's needed, it's necessary. But yeah, so I think, Shelly, I think by, I feel a lot more comfortable about this June than I did last year, right? About where we, where we can be in terms of dealing with this, this traffic flow.
Okay. A little bit, we have started thinking about it already, you know, about how the closure occurs and that kind of thing. And how, you know, the north Glenwood gets backed up, so.
Okay, great, well, that's encouraging and I look forward to seeing more on that, thanks.
Everybody, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in my thank you to staff and CDOT and all the outside agencies that worked on this, they. Everyone jumped on this, I think I only went to like the first meeting, like. Late last year, like certainly after the, you know, once we got our arms around the fire and started planning for this, so it's been a long time coming and developing. This plan, so I wanted to say thank you for that and then I also wanted to ask. You know, maybe CDOT and Gary and Terry, if council gets questions on this, you know, because there will be pressure. This will impact businesses, it will impact our residents, is, you know, we are doing this to save lives. Is that, Gary, is that fair to say?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about, I think we all agree. And so yes, that's what it's all about, it's all about safety and we know that it's gonna create inconvenience for, as you said. Deborah, businesses, recreation folks, even the rafters. They'll still have access to the rest areas up to a certain point, but it's, it's gonna affect them and there's. And with regard to questions, I think that, I think Elise is way on top of a lot of this stuff, Todd, right, for CDOT and. Obviously, we'll do what we can to, to try to. Answer those specific questions. I know my office is perfectly willing to, to take some of those calls and try to offer as much. Help as we can in answering them.
Yeah, Gary, we're actually gonna, in the process of trying to hire a consultant PIO this summer for Glenwood Canyon specifically, so. Hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that person on board and then we'll have some help for Elise for some of those questions messaging. And I wanted to throw it out to the council too, we're planning on having a. Town hall of some sorts here in the next couple, three weeks with us, Forest Service, town. Chamber, anybody involved, the public, so we can kind of get the message out, one big, one big splash out there, hopefully to get this, this plan out there, everybody, what we're kind of thinking for the summer, so. Or Elise is trying to work with the chamber, I think, or possibly the town too, to see about using their platform for Zoom to kind of host it and then. Have a panel to get this out to the whole community, so. Maybe one more big step to get all the information out and then we'll be ready for summer. And like Gary said, this is gonna be a, a very moving, living document that we'll keep working on as. The summer progresses and we hit those wrinkles that we know we will and we'll work through them and it's been a great group, I appreciate.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in my thank you to staff and C dot and all the outside agencies that worked on this. They everyone jumped on this. I think I only went to like the first meeting. Like late last year, like certainly after the, you know, once we got our arms around the fire and started planning for this. So it's been a long time coming and developing this plan. So I want to say thank you for that. And then I also wanted to ask, you know, maybe C dot and Gary and Terry, if council gets questions on this, you know, because there will be pressure. This will impact businesses. It will impact our residents. Is, you know, we are doing this to save lives. Is that Gary? Is that fair to say?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's at the end of the day. That's what it's all about. And I think we all agree. And so, yes, that's what it's all about. It's all about safety and we know that it's going to create inconvenience for, as you said, Deborah, businesses, recreation folks, even the rafters. They'll still have access to the rest areas up to a certain point, but it's it's going to affect them. And there's and with regard to questions, I think that I think Elise is way on top of a lot of this stuff, Todd, right? For C dot and obviously, we'll do what we can to to try to answer those specific questions. I know my office is perfectly willing to to take some of those calls and try to offer as much help as we can in answering them.
Yeah, Gary, we're actually gonna in the process of trying to hire a consultant PIO this summer for Glenwood Canyon specifically. So hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that person on board and then we'll have some help for at least for some of those questions messaging. And I wanted to throw it out to the council, too. We're planning on having a town hall of some sorts here in the next couple, three weeks with us Forest Service, Town Chamber, anybody involved, the public, so we can kind of get the message out, one big one big splash out there, hopefully to get this this plan out there, everybody, what we're kind of thinking for the summer. So where Lisa's trying to work with the Chamber, I think, or possibly the town, too, to see about using their platform for Zoom to kind of host it and then have a panel to get this out to the whole community. So maybe one more big step to get all the information out and then we'll be ready for summer. And like Gary said, this is going to be a a very moving living document that we'll keep working on as the summer progresses and we hit those wrinkles that we know we will and we'll work through them. And it's been a great group. I appreciate Gary and Terry's time and effort making to the meetings and help make some crucial decisions for keeping our travel public on I seventy and the people of Glenwood's very unsafe. So appreciate everybody's input.
Paul, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, just real quick, um, the Glenwood Canyon Restoration Alliance is planning some trail days for restoration. And I know they're having a public meeting May thirteenth. Are we coordinating this information with them? And is this part of the presentation on May thirteenth? To make sure that they're aware of kind of these steps of when a closure might happen, because I'd hate to see a big work group up Grizzly Creek or somewhere like that. And then just awareness factors of who who contacts them.
I know Elise is on their agenda. So either Elise or I, one of us from C dot is a part of the agenda for that day.
Okay.
I will definitely be part of that.
And and they'll be in that warning system, TJ?
Yeah, if they want to, we can put them in the same warning system as the rafters.
Okay, I think that would be good.
So we have two different systems out there. We have Everbridge, which is a reverse nine one one through the county, which is a personal decision or, you know, anybody can sign up for it personally. And then we have Ready Ops through our H L T folks that'll send out a page or an email. And that's the one that the to get their permit, the river rafters have to give us contact names and numbers. So that's the type of where the trail crews, we can put them in there. We have some Forest Service contacts, the railroad. Any of those in that list will get pages anytime we hit these thresholds. So yeah, we can definitely get them on that list.
That'd be great. And just to share with the council, I was in a recent meeting with C dot and Union Pacific and and their coordinating efforts to make sure that because we have Amtrak now going to daily service and we have the Rocky Mountaineer coming out in August, that so they'll be aware of closures as well. Just so and we know that impacts us as a tourist community.
Any other questions?
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much, Gary, Terry, Todd, and I think that's everybody. Yeah, I guess we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our Arts and Culture Report session. We're a little bit early. So I guess we can even I don't see a whole lot of folks in the attendees who are on that I can promote even. So.
Yeah, they might be waiting for their scheduled time.
Yeah, so I guess.
We bring up that other issue that we talked about? Or should I do that later?
Uh, let's do that later as part of council comments.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I guess while I have you here, Gary, is there is there a way, just as we're talking about evacuation plans, and folks can check out for fifteen minutes, I guess, if if they want. But you know, a lot of the conversation I've been seeing online is about being able to evacuate West Glenwood Springs. And and I know that's you know, I've heard you talk about part of that is stopping traffic at in Carbondale or Iron Ridge commuter traffic, you know, as we experienced with the South Canyon flare up, low fire, we had some the summer before Grizzly Creek. But is there a way, I just was traveling on I seventy westbound a couple days or weeks ago. Is there like an emergency access for folks if they need to evacuate West Glenwood Springs so they can jump on to eighty-two in any again, emergency way other than doing the proper way through exit one fourteen?
Hey, Gary, I can maybe jump in and handle handle that one. And Jonathan, can I share a screen again?
Yeah.
Great.
As long as it's Google map image.
It does have a Google in it. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Um, and Shelley, I'll bring it up to so that you can. It's a little bit bigger. Sorry. Let me bring it to a reading view. Okay, um, so we have, you know, recognizing that there was a lot of concern about the north and west Glenwood evacuations. Especially last year, you know, with the mile marker eleven fire where they were trying to fight a fire on the on the north side and Gary and the fire crews needed to dip water from the Colorado River to to fight the fire. So because they were operating across I seventy, a closure at mile marker one fourteen really needed to occur to occur. And so with that, you know, the the pattern in the afternoon and our people flow pattern, you know, is a lot of people coming southbound on State Highway eighty-two. And if there if there is a closure of the canyon to the west, you know, this is the closure point at the one sixteen. And this is how our our roundabout there currently operates. If there's a closure here and they're not going back to the west, then they're or to the east, I'm sorry, they're headed this way. And so you can see as they travel along Highway six, they then end up at our one fourteen exit here. And just like, you know, what happened in the Grand Avenue Bridge, you know, a lot of people, once, you know, it starts to back up along State Highway eighty-two, people start to cut off towards Midland. Thinking that they might be able to save themselves some time. And when they do that, we have a, you know, a large flow that comes from from Midland and comes through our roundabout system here. And so once, you know, we have a large flow coming through here, this is the dominant direction. And so you can see that any flow that's coming off of Highway six, off of Mall Ray, off of Highway six, going back to the east is all cut off by by this movement. And so, you know, with that, you know, all of the all of the residents in north and west Glenwood are essentially trapped. You know, the Highway six, you know, the congestion, back to back cars won't allow anybody out of that neighborhood. Just a little bit more information about that. Jessica did a great job of looking at some of our counters out on State Highway two and on I seventy and and looking at the volumes that are coming through and looking at essentially how quickly our our town becomes congested in the event of a of a closure. And, you know, I'll say that all of our closures are somewhat different. You know, if we close on the on the west side, as you know, this this model shows, it's very different than closing, you know, on the east side like we just just talked about. So and it matters what time of day, if it's the AM or the PM, you know, which direction traffic's really generally flowing. But in this model, you know, this this distance here, this roadway section from one fourteen all the way to Twenty-seventh Street, you know, essentially backs up in thirty-seven minutes and with, you know, if, you know, cars are twenty feet long and we have no interruptions in traffic, essentially, this is this is full in thirty-seven minutes. These other routes, Midland, Blake, can fill up kind of simultaneously. As people start to see that backup occur, you know, they'll jump off out in Midland and they'll start to head in this direction. Or they'll try to jump off on Blake and see if they can make time around the the backup on State Highway eighty-two. So Blake backs up in about twenty-four minutes. Or I'm sorry, Midland backs up in about twenty-four minutes and Blake backs up in eleven minutes. So you know, this is really an operational issue, a broad operational issue with you know, as a result of our town being, you know, in the middle of a of the confluence of two two major rivers surrounded by canyons and really the only two routes in and out of town are I seventy and State Highway eighty-two. So the operations of State Highway eighty-two and I seventy really dictate how our internal system functions. So to answer your question, you know, we really will need to start thinking about what controls we can put in on State Highway eighty-two to try to keep this from happening, particularly in a, you know, in an afternoon. If we have, you know, any sorts of closures, particularly to the back to the west. So I think that, you know, you asked, you know, if we could start to begin to work with some of these communities down here, we have to. I think that that's part of our answer here.
But yeah, I think that's part of the answer. But I think with the other the other question was, is there any emergency access to I seventy out of West Glenwood other than one fourteen?
No, and I'm sorry, I forgot that part. So we are I guess, looking at it, you know, there with that, you know, with this issue of of backing, you know, Highway six becoming super congested, you know, the one of the potential solutions would be to try to create some sort of a secondary access, you know, across, at least so that you could come from Highway six and get into the into this other lane, into the the eastbound lane of I seventy, so you could do a turn back to the back to the east. And it hasn't been evaluated yet, but it is an idea out there. And there was also another idea of, you know, potentially opening a barrier here at the very far west end to see if we could get people back out onto the highway. But if the highway is closed in this direction, you know, we probably wouldn't do anything like that. It would have to occur somewhere in here.
Carrie, did you say you would close access from eighty-two at any point? Did I miss that? That maybe you'd close at Buffalo Valley or CMC exit or something like that? So we didn't have the traffic coming in from up valley? Or is that part of that?
You know, it's an idea. I mean, I think it's something that we have to evaluate with this larger group, you know, C dot and all of our partners to the to the south to see what we can do to hold traffic in that event, you know? So I think it'll be a part of an upcoming emergency analysis on on State Highway two.
Okay. I dated myself saying Buffalo Valley. I don't even know what to call that place anymore.
I knew what you meant.
Shelley.
Still known that way, Paula. So Terry, again, again, will the focus be on, and I guess I'm maybe this is just understood, but I'm hoping the focus will be on being able to clear out and evacuate those neighborhoods in West Glenwood. Because that's what I've heard is that they were, you know, Donigan Road was at a standstill because it does not have the right of way trying to get across six and for them to head south or to head east and and where do they go? So I guess having a plan basically for all of our neighborhoods in the city is is how do we get people out and and where do they go?
Right. Shelley, I would add that, you know, part of the part of the problem that happens when we do that that rather urgent closure at the one fourteen of I seventy westbound is that within and I I'm sure Jessica could probably give us a great idea, but within ten minutes, ten to fifteen minutes, we're already backed up past the one sixteen on I seventy. And if we allow that traffic, which we we're we're always very generous, we always allow them to get off at the one fourteen and head back east on Highway six. Meanwhile, we've got traffic coming northbound on Highway eighty-two coming in and they're they find their way around whatever they can and they all end up in West Glenwood. And I think a part of the plan would be to to pick a designated route out of West Glenwood. And in addition to I seventy and Highway eighty-two closures, to try to prior prioritize keeping either Donigan or Highway six open for traffic to get in and out of West Glenwood, preferably out in the case of a fire. So that's going to require, again, that's why it's going to require Glenwood PD, it's going to require Garfield County Sheriff's Office, C dot, State Patrol and virtually all hands on deck to manage that traffic to avoid the situations we've seen historically.
Okay.
So keep in mind this this evaluation, these times are based on only traffic that's headed westbound on I seventy. So that doesn't include background traffic in our system that's already on the system that could be affecting it. Any other closures or accidents? And so the hard part that we're going to have to look at is how how do we get fire PD to a location to be able to evacuate them because that backup happens so quickly? And if it's backed up, it's it's a challenge to get our our crews out to be able to work on any idea. So it's going to be a longer conversation.
Right. And I'm just hearing like going back to the coal seam fire when they had to evacuate, you know, fifteen minutes or whatever, get out, they Donigan was was a standstill, so they couldn't get out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's and that's where by pre-planning it and figuring out which intersections law enforcement can manage and which ones they can't. Right? And that's they're the only ones that that can do that. So, you know, as you point out, the intersection of Donigan and Highway six requires some sort of artificial management to keep Donigan from just becoming a parking lot when Highway six is busy. So so figuring out where those priority points are to put people to try to manage that is is a real issue.
One thing that that we came up with during the Grand Avenue Bridge is the management of this intersection here. Traffic control was here ahead of this entrance from Highway six. They were here and I believe that we had somebody here to to allow a break in traffic to occur. So they would hold traffic on this side and allow a merge from this this direction. So there is, you know, there are some things that we've already done, but I do think that, you know, there are, you know, other operational things that we could come up with to try to relieve this. You know, I I was thinking that, you know, maybe we could have PD push, you know, since most of the traffic would be in the in the westbound lane on Highway six, if you could push them, force them over to the to the to the north lane or to the north side of the roadway, or I'm sorry, to the south side of the roadway and allow, you know, that flow from those neighborhoods. I think that that would be another potential operational thing that we could do for that that neighborhood up there. But I think it needs some both work, both externally and internally about our capacity to, you know, to to control these intersections and to take other, you know, operational measures that we could we could do.
Right. Thank you. Seems like that question burned our fifteen minutes. Appreciate everything, Terry, Jessica, a big shout out to you as well. I know you worked really hard on this. Gary and who else?
Matt, Matt, Matt sat in on a lot of those meetings and he's been awfully quiet. So.
Thank you, Matt, as well. We really appreciate that. All right, we are on time. Even though I tried my best not to get us on time, I will start promoting folks over. I think I'm going to basically promote everybody whose last name is not Gould, unless the Goulds have a strong interest in the Arts and Culture Board work session. So Karina Jones, Jenny Trumbull, John Carr, Pat Miller, Brian Smith. It's like Alyssa's doing this with me. Thank you, Alyssa.
Gretchen.
I think I got. Oh, I thought I got Gretchen. I think I just cleared out the entire waiting room. So it's a big table today. All right, who is starting this off?
I'll start us off. My name's Stephanie Davis. I didn't get to see myself. How do I look? Um, thank you. Stephanie Davis, the Chair of the Arts and Culture Board. And I'm been on it since its formation, but now we have a lot of new members and new blood. So I've got to make And I'm been on it since its formation, but now we have a lot of new members and new blood, so I've got to make sure they don't get rid of me. Thanks for your time today. I want to let the other members introduce themselves briefly and tell you about themselves. So I don't see who's on, but let's see. Brianna? Liz? John? Jenny?
Yeah, I can start. I don't think I'm muted. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yeah, who's, who's that?
Yeah, I'm Jenny Trumbull. I've been, um, in the valley for just over eight years. Um, living in Glenwood for most of that time. I'm an architect at CCY Architects in Basalt. Um, and I live in Cardiff Glen and I am really excited to, um, be a part of the Arts and Culture Board this year.
Cool.
Great. What else do we have?
Yeah, I guess I'll go next if I'm unmuted. I'm not sure. Okay. So I'm John Carr and, uh, my recent, um, recently relocated to Glenwood Springs and, uh, from New York City. I was there for the last couple of decades working as an artist and, um, working specifically in public arts and murals and, um, yeah. I'm really happy to be a part of the board and to, um, sort of help along the process, um, that I know so well and, you know, by doing it all these years and, um, yeah, and just, um, to be a, be a part of it all. And, um, yeah, so thanks for having me.
Liz, are you there? Okay. Last call for my board members.
Stephanie, we do have Karina Jones is not officially on yet, but she will be appointed, I believe, this evening, so.
Okay, let's hear about Karina.
Hi, guys. Um, I'm Karina Jones. Um, I've been with the valley for twenty-five years. Um, I came when I was six years old. And I currently work for Alpine Bank as a certified bank trainer. I've been with them for eight years. Um, I live in Glenwood, so I'm looking forward to helping out the Arts and Culture Board. So thank you guys for having me.
Great. And I've been, for you city council people, um, I've been living in Glenwood for four years and my background's in museums and historical societies for roughly twenty years in paid positions and mostly they are public, public museums, cities and counties and stuff like that. So I've had some good, uh, well, I hope helpful experience. One of the things we want to update you on that we sort of asked for a year ago from you all and you helped, said we could fund is a public art plan. When we first got together, we thought about the public art that exists and it never needs to tie together beautifully, but what are the individual strengths and collective strengths of the art that's already here? Not to just bring in a bunch of new art from God knows where, but to really sort of celebrate what's in place. And we found a consultant out of state who has been working with us and coming up with sort of a method for how would we acquire that next piece of art, whether it's tomorrow or a year from now or two years, whether it's donated or expensive. Where's, again, my museum background, I'm not running the show here on this consultant, but you sort of see where the depth of your collection is and decide to fill in with things that you might acquire. Is it a mural? Is it a sculpture? And of course, the fantastic piece at the North Landing has nothing to do with us or our art plan, but it was a wonderful, one of our members was on the charrettes, but I mean, that's just a really great example of representing Glenwood, using local marble, using a noted artist. I mean, a lot of factors can come together, um, fairly easily. If the community, if we're aware of who our artists are and maybe what our identity is. The public art plan, the big thing was to have public input and engagement so that it wasn't just our art board saying, this is what this city needs and to weigh it with our individual tastes and art is very subjective. That got a little crushed because of not having festivals all summer to be like, take our survey downtown at this party or at the True Rivers Park or come to our town hall meeting, trying to get input about an art plan. So we did finally engage in a survey where we got a hundred and eighty-five responses. And of course, I was all excited, like, oh, there's nine thousand people in this town. I'm sure we'll get eight thousand responses, but that's not the way it goes. So we did have a survey and we did get some input, um, which may have already been shared with you or that we will share with you. So the community is somewhat involved in what they'd like to see. Is there any input about that or comment about that?
Not right now, Stephanie, but we did promote Ethan Merritt and he's another one of our new members.
Okay, is he on?
Yes.
He is.
Oh, okay, Ethan.
Hello.
Oh, hi. We were just, can you just tell us a little sentence about yourself?
Yeah, I'm an architect, new to the valley. I just moved here from New York City. Um, I have a lot of connections, various people in the art moving, art shipping, logistics. Um, I'm an architect. Uh, I work in a broad spectrum of, uh, typologies from residential to, to commercial, mixed use everywhere in between. Happy to be here.
Good, good. Oh, my gosh. So if you guys are taking notes, two architects, two artists and me. I don't have the talent, but I know how to promote art. Or maybe do public facing, do public facing art and, and, and feedback. Um, we wanted to touch a little bit on, and again, you're probably more up to speed on this than we are, the Community Arts Center. As you know, that's been undergoing renovations and being brought up to code for classes and exhibitions. And that's such an intrinsically historic place and a place where the Glenwood Springs Arts Council, which still exists, um, operated from. So we're excited about what can go on there, um, because it's like we want to do stuff all around town, but that's like a house we already have. Something that we wanted to bring forward that is interesting or important to us, uh, one is an arts directory online, sort of a branded art branded portal. And that means to water it down. I mean, something online, either on the city's website and maybe through parks and rec, because that's who we report to. That's a listing of what's going on around town that's arts and culture based. Something we're putting on or just something that's offered exhibits. Um, it sounds really simple. It probably wouldn't be really expensive, except for somebody inputting all the initial information and periodically updating. Or if there's a software, maybe where how you do listings with pictures. But we want to, um, again, sort of celebrate the foundation we have in art. And again, now this is not just public art, but programming and, um, classes and cultural opportunities, education, adults, children, but just to kind of bring in what already exists because it is a cultural town. It's a lot of, this town has a lot of wonderful identities, but the culture, if it's sort of brought together in one place, helps, um, helps people find out what's going on around town. And I know from my museum work, I mean, you never have like a huge, you know, you don't fill up a stadium with people to see an art exhibition. You hope for popularity, but a lot of times they need a little help having people come and see, see things or attend things. Um, again, I don't know that that would be free, but it would be some seed money for maybe some kind of software calendar. Another attempt to bring all the art together, and this would cost some money. I was going to call Grand Junction, but I didn't get a chance, is the art that is around town, like right outside of City Hall, you have that work called Aspens. And then right next to it by the police station is something called Dancing Moon. Those are both by Revan Marie Swanson. To just, I don't know if we already had these and hopefully we didn't have them and they got vandalized, but to have sort of a substantive label on there that gives credit to the artist, whether or not they are still living or still living here. The title, you know, when you go to a museum, I mean, I hate when some things, it's okay if it's called untitled, but I like to see the title Dancing Moon, you know, you get a little bit more excited about what's around town. So not to take for granted kind of what we walk by all the time, but we don't know anything about it. John Carr was talking about something with the murals or even with these three dimensional pieces. A label I want to have because maybe because I'm old fashioned, but the, a QR code is where you could go up to it and with a QR code and really learn a whole lot about the artist and the inspiration for the piece and all that kind of thing. I said Grand Junction because I just went there and they had a pretty sturdy smallish label on their public art and you could just walk up there and go, oh, this is by that guy. And you walk down the street more and then you see another thing by the same person. Or, you know, Fred Haberline, no longer living, but it's just good to see who made it. The classic museum labeling, title, artist's name, birth and death, and maybe what it's made out of or who donated it or something. That would be, since that sort of hardware and installation, that would be more like, and again, I wanted to kind of double check with Grand Junction, but probably a five thousand dollar project if we wanted to really, write those out. I could write them out and then hammer, I mean, fabricate that and put it on the base of the artwork. And again, now that I just got a dog and walk around a lot more, I like to see something beautiful, but I'd like to sort of see who did it and when they did it. So that's something we'd love to do. Cause again, it's reflecting back on the current art, current and past art artists in our community who probably need to be celebrated, but which is not to say we're always looking backwards. We are looking forward as well. We had a, an idea also on the agenda, City Art Walk, which I guess is sort of self-explanatory. I don't know if Brian's on the call, if you can explain the vision for that?
Oh, yeah. So as we develop, um, the inventory of public art pieces around, around the city, we'd like to create, um, tourist and walk-through opportunities. This is, uh, something Jen and I have talked about quite a bit along some of our downtown areas like Cooper Street. We have a number of art pieces that already exist and supplementing that and creating a, um, an art walk where people can go and look at wayfinding signage, either utilizing their app, utilizing a, uh, downtown map that they would get from the chambers or just from the wayfinding signage, go around and then, uh, like Stephanie was talking about, be able to, to read about each of the art pieces. Um, we'll be creating plaques that will be going on each of those. And we'd like to include with those like a QR code where people can scan it and then read about the artist, read about the inspiration behind the art, why it was placed here, um, the significance of it for Glenwood Springs and in the community, what it represents. And that just goes in line with, uh, some of the goals and initiatives for the, the arts board, which is to, uh, promote cultural awareness and, and art opportunities, um, in the community. And our plan really focuses on that place making aspect in how do we not only provide beautification for landscaping infrastructure projects, but also look at public art, what's its place in the community? How do we uh, fill in the gaps in locations where those should belong? And then how do we utilize that and leverage it into something that is a fun activity for visitors and residents alike?
Yeah, so I mean, you could just see somebody almost grabbing that map and walking out of the Hotel Colorado or Denver and, or Airbnb's they have now, I guess, but you just kind of walk, let's go here and let's go there and let's see this and, um, we used to have, I hate to admit, I don't hate to admit it, but I know you guys don't like, uh, too many Californians invading, but I got in over the barter one night four years ago. But we had, when I worked at the LA County Museum of Art, in the LA Convention and Visitors Bureau, we'd call the Cultural Draw, the third night stay. For many people, it could be the first night that they came for culture and concerts and all that, but you had like Disneyland's first, you go to the beach second. And that third night stay, and again, it's great if it's first, but sort of this art walk and some of that is really another thing that has people circulating around downtown, has people staying one more day because they want to do the art walk or the art event. And it's a great way to just, um, add a little dimension to the tourist, uh, tourist experience. Um, something else we all talk about too on our committee is, um, on our board. And I think what's kind of, I, I shouldn't say we talk about it, I talk about it, but, um, this survey that we took was with all locals. So you've, we've got that balance of we want to appeal to tourists, but we also want to just, I'm glad that the locals were in the survey and not tourists because we want to please ourselves and bolster our sense of identity through our public art also. And every bit of art isn't like, here comes another big sculpture, or once you have those decisions made about kind of what you're collecting, it sounds negative, but you can also reject things. You know, I worked in a museum and it's like, oh, we have this elephant for you. And I mean, you don't want it, but this is this big donor. And then you calculate how many peanuts it's going to take to feed this thing. And I mean, you have to think of a way to say, we don't want that. And that would just, we wouldn't do anything that is absurd. But when you have like a lot of murals, you might be like, we all have a lot of murals and we have a lot of sculptures. I don't know. You kind of get a balance going around town. And not just be beholden to something because it's free, even though a donation is really a great thing. Uh, something else? Yes.
Stephanie, it looks like we have a few questions from, uh, council members. So if, if they could jump in. Shelley and then Paula. And then, uh, actually, you know, can I, shall I get, uh, Brianna?
Yeah, if you could bring Brianna over.
Yes, she is over.
She will be leaving the board, but I think for now she's been on it, so she might have some input also. I just had a quick comment, Stephanie, on the whole idea of the, kind of the art walk plan and, and that, and maybe staff could speak to this, Jen or Brian. Could that be a layer on our GIS map? Because I've seen Terry with her iPad and the GIS map, and I don't know how much of that we can make public, but if, if that could be like a layer on the GIS map that, that could be made a public part of an app or something, I think that would be really cool. So, anyway.
Yes.
That would be great.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, Brianna, welcome. Um, I know you might be leaving us. I told them I'm the dinosaur that has been on the board the longest, but you're one of our pioneers too. If you want to talk a little bit about, um, either your background or what we've endeavored to do that the board will continue to try to do.
Yeah. So I was actually listening the whole time. I just, uh, was on the sort of YouTube end of the world. So as, as was mentioned, I recently joined the city as your new PIO on Monday. So unfortunately had to transition off of the Arts and Culture Board, um, but you know, do have that historical knowledge of everything that the board has tried to accomplish. And I think Stephanie, you've covered a lot of big points of what we've tried to accomplish with the art plan, um, and also some of the vision for some of the other activities with, uh, with Art Walk um, and the, the designated plates. Um, and so, you know, I certainly, yeah, in, in, in the staff, staff capacity, I hope to continue to support sort of spreading the news of everything that the Arts and Culture Board is doing. Um, but yes, happy to be here to help answer questions, um, especially since you've got so many great, fabulous new board members.
Isn't it? It's exciting. Was there another board question? Cause of course I can go some more.
There is a couple of more council questions. Yes, Paula Step and then Councilor Davis.
Hi, Stephanie. Good to see you. And all these board members. That's fantastic to see such a full, well-rounded group. That's great. Um, when you were speaking to the Art Walk, it kind of reminded me that earlier you had mentioned the Arts Council. Are any of these projects coordinated? Are you working with the Arts Council? Um, I, I just always try to get a feel of how the two of these kind of mix together and I hope they do to some degree. And I'm just curious if you could address.
Yes. Well, we were spoiled up until about three months ago. We were spoiled because a woman, Bonnie Crowdeville, was on their board and on our board. So she, it wasn't very official, but if someone was now the way things have turned out this year, allergic to one more Zoom meeting. It was very unofficial, but that was someone who would tell the left hand and the right hand what we were doing. Since then, we had, um, is it Cynthia? Who's the head of it now? Uh, attend one of our meetings and she happens to now be one of, not now, but I found out she's one of my neighbors. The answer is no, but we haven't worked against each other. The answer is that we had someone who could officially bridge us. I'm trying to figure out, and I shouldn't just say everything's up to me, but I'm trying to figure out how to go to each other's meetings, but again, to not give like me one more meeting, I, I don't mind, but one more meeting to go to or them one more meeting to go to. So I actually was going to talk Cynthia about it because she said, I'm from the Glenwood Arts Council and I want to see what you guys are doing. And I thought she I want to see what you guys are doing and I thought she maybe would start coming to our meetings. So again, sort of separate but equal, but not by design and I think we would like to be. Affiliated or, you know, there's an art, another art group that paints and they have a show, I can't think of what Guild maybe.
Right, right.
I'd like to, without formalizing it, I'd like us to have a mechanism that keeps us together and that could be our meeting minutes. But do you have anything in mind or does that kind of characterize what's been happening up till right now?
You know, some, some of the things that we do with the council and with other boards and commissions is just an annual meeting. I mean, that way you wouldn't have to do monthly meetings, but just kind of, you know. Throwing that out and just kind of like, hey, let's get the arts community together. But I was just curious that, one, we don't want to, you know, I'd hate to see any of you duplicate services. But two, just to kind of know what each other's doing, that was kind of nice that you had that person as a crossover.
And yes, and I, like I said, my neighbor, I keep walking by her house and thinking, I'm going to ask her how she'd like to. Keep each other informed, so maybe I can get back to you guys on that.
Okay.
One solve, one solve might be just rotating, each member just rotates. And that way you're only doing it once or twice, an extra meeting once or twice every six months.
That's great.
Right, and I didn't mean to sound lazy about the meeting, I mean, I can just, John and Ethan and all these people have so much energy right now because they're new. They could go to 10 meetings a month, I mean, I don't care if they can go, I'm just kidding. I, yes, I think that's a good idea though, because I didn't mean to be. Lazy, but then you get a conflict and you're kind of like, oh, I'm de facto, but I don't have to go, so let me kind of. We can all think about that at our next meeting.
And I can speak to that just a little bit, you know, early on when the Arts Board was created, we had several meetings with Arts Council. Just to, for that very reason, so that, you know, we weren't stepping on charts till, so we were, we, we just wanted to explore, you know, what were their ideas? What were our ideas as far as programming goes? And and then over the years, that 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 communication and collaboration kind of transitioned to more of a. Of a idea around an arts directory, finding some kind of a hub where we can. Facilitate a one stop for all information on what's happening with, you know, performing arts. Public art programs, private art programs. Maybe a list of artists for consignment projects, different things like that. And that's a, that's an idea that has always been really important and high on the priority list for the Arts Board. And and we even have a couple of members who have, who have started to put together. Different lists and websites and Jen's been working on a website on the city page. To to put that together as well, trying to figure out what's the best way to facilitate this, who owns that page? You know, who who's the administrator that collects all that information, that's something we're still working on. But I see that being probably one of the more valuable partnerships with the Arts Council and the Arts Guild and all these other organizations. Is simply working together to to create this hub of information where people can say, hey, you know, I'm interested in going to an art gallery this. Weekend or maybe do a date night with a wine and painting class with my spouse or, you know, my kids want to get into a dance class, what's available? Instead of, you know, having to go to each organization's webpage and kind of piecemeal it, you know, they can find everything right there.
That's great, okay, thank you, I just was curious on where that stood, so thank you, that really fills it out and thanks Stephanie and Ethan.
Sure, no, and I mean, we're certainly not interested in like, oh, that's not ours, oh, that's not sponsored by us. I mean, if there was even a commercial, you know, those ceramic things where you have a store, I mean, it would be, when you're in the arts, you know that they need a lot of. Care and feeding and it's very. Inclusive, not not like, you know, this kind of bureaucratic, oh, that's not mine, you know, so we want to have it be sort of seamless. Because the denominator would be art and creativity.
Right.
Steve Davis.
I just wanted to comment on the Art Walk, which I think would be a great addition to this community. There's a lot of great art around if we only knew where it was. My comment is that, you know, not all art is outdoors. There's some great art pieces that are actually inside that could be accessed as well and should be a part of that. There's a Fred Haberlin mural that's. 16 feet long and four feet tall hanging on the wall in the fly shop downtown called Hookers. And it's a great piece, but if you didn't go in there, you wouldn't know it was there. And so I think there's a lot of hidden art around town. I know some of our bank lobbies and hotel lobbies as well have just fabulous pieces of artwork that should be included in that artwork. Art Walk, excuse me.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point and Hookers, I'm sure would love the foot traffic. We have a sort of an Excel sheet, I didn't do it, I mean, somebody did it. But we have a directory and we should probably run that by you all and see if you want to add to it. Because again, the idea would be inclusive, not real strict criterion, but that's good to know because. We would want it to be, God, talk about Easter like an Easter egg hunt, you know, I want to see this one and there'd be, you know. And take a really good picture of it and have it on the Art Walk directory, so I'm making a note of that, that it's not. Not purely outdoor or not purely, just has to be something we know about, we'll count on you guys maybe to fill in, fill in our chart, we could circulate that.
Yeah, I know the lobby of the Hotel Den has some great, great pieces as well, so.
Yeah, oh, good, oh, you've, you. Like I said, I'm walking my dog, so you're whining and dining and I'm just running around picking up poop, so together we have. A great, great art walk here. We were. One of the things too, and we walked around with Mary Noon, who is an artist and who had been on our board and now isn't. I mean, she rolled off voluntarily after her term was up. But murals, you know, and murals are another thing, they're very big, they're very bold. I'd like us to see, we were talking about how do you preserve a mural or going forward, do you start making them on? Plywood with certain materials so that they could be. Longer lasting or repaired in pieces or something that's smarter about murals and John Carr, you know about that.
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of opportunities to actually merge the last two things we were talking about. The murals and the Art Walk and and so this is just off the top sort of thing again, my style. But so on Glen Avenue, as you're coming over the brand new bridge. Right, the the property right before Doc Holidays. There's a big sort of hideous wall there where the other building was taken down and now it's all like, kind of, kind of. Not the most attractive thing and. What my idea was is maybe to to have a mural go there and then that tells about the Art Walk. Join Glenwood Springs Art Walk, some kind of branding, some kind of thing to hold it all together to let you know, like, you're going in and. Oh, there's this whole other thing there, so it would be twofold, that it would be a point of beautification. But also letting everybody know like right down there, like in. You know, we're trying to direct traffic to like the foot, the foot traffic of the Art Walk, as it were. Yeah, I think it would be a really nice way to sort of tackle both, both things that we're going for, combining the Arts Walk and murals and all that. So that was just an idea that I had.
Yeah, I think we are, I'm going to kind of wrap up because I know the board, I mean, the City Council needs to talk to us. I did want to give. We had one more item there, board input, our board's input on project beautification, you know, not just having the two architects. Do you guys like how I'm throwing the two architects out, you two architects without your permission? We wouldn't mind being included in our group, by or even just suggesting. Getting folded into project beautification projects around town. And again, not that I have to explain that, but just if something could be aesthetic, but it's still functional and still in the price range you're looking for. But to weigh in maybe a little bit on this identity we're trying to do. Vancouver, Washington, I just went there, not now, but a year ago or something, whenever we could last move somewhere. And they have kind of these rocks by the water and there's just quotes in the rocks, you know, everything's not this grandiose sculpture and everything, so. We would love to have some input on, like I said, on the beautification projects. Not input, input, use our input, I guess, use our expertise, volunteer expertise, if you wouldn't mind looping that through us sometimes.
And to kind of add to that, so Terry and I have been trying to to consider art placement or artistic. Aesthetic beautification to some of these capital projects that she's working on. In a survey of 21 communities around Colorado, almost all the ones surveyed either have in their code. A 1% of capital projects greater than $50,000. 1% of that project budget goes towards art beautification. There's a couple of different ways to do that, in some cases, it's $1,000 per acre for development, there, there's all kinds of different ways. But but I think what the the board would like is to, during the design phase, simply look at, are there opportunities where it makes sense? For some artistic expression. And when Terry and I met with the, with council earlier to talk about, you know, what is your vision for landscaping as we complete some of these projects? Council's direction was to make it maintenance and water efficient. So, so in place of of where there's, where there could be opportunities for a lot of greenery that might be very heavy water use and heavy maintenance. We can replace some of that with some artistic elements that that provide, break it up and provide that that aesthetic. Without having to have a lot of maintenance behind it.
Right, it's kind of a tweak, tweak, I wanted to say really fast about the murals. I want to do some more, you have like this one that Mary Noon made and it's on the, I think it's called the Chadwick Building, so you have sort of the owner saying. We don't want to pay for that and we have the artist saying, well, I can't pay for that. And this, we can not talk about this this minute, but an example of that would be if our Arts and Culture Board found out how much it would be to. Restore it. Then you could almost maybe have each party put in to get it done. And then when you have this person working on the mural, all these people are excited and see something going on. A lot of the installation of the art is almost an event, even between starting and finishing. Painting something, so that's kind of interesting, depends on if you're a mural, mural fan. Any feedback from the council?
Yeah, we have a couple more, they might be questions, they might be feedback, but Ingrid and Charlie both have their hands up, so go ahead, Ms. Huso.
So my question was, I know that there is usually a youth member to the board. And I'm curious if you've had any luck in soliciting any members of our community that are under 18 for that position? And if not, what are we, how are we trying to get a member to join?
That's a great question, Shelley's been such a good recruiter, not to put her on the spot. And then Brian, I don't know if you have have thought about either how to put the word out or how to. Generate interest, because that's so important, of course.
Yeah, and we thought about through, you know, of course, through the high school, through their art programs and art classes. And I did hear, I think, almost a year ago now, that there was a little bit of maybe miscommunication on someone that was interested. But I think part of that has gotten lost in COVID also and the disruptions to the schools. So that's certainly that some. Thing that we should maybe reach out to the school district and and see how we can approach that or. Or maybe with our new PIO officer, put a call out for a youth member on our Arts and Culture Board.
In in some situations, they've been coming to us and and I think the board's been doing a good job with soliciting. Late, really, it started this year, a few months ago, we've been starting to collaborate with schools for student public art projects. You know, we, we had one gal come and propose a mural project, we have another one that had contacted Matt Langhorse. That's looking to to paint some Transformers, there's another one that's looking to do a public art placement. And and so we've created what I hope will be a good lasting partnership with the schools. To have them come and present their project to the board, the board can do kind of an approval of it. Bet it out a little bit, it helped fill in the blanks for these students that have not done this before. With ideas of how to fund the project, appropriate locations for the public art piece. And and then in these, as these art students come to them, we can kind of hit them up at the end, hey, would you like to be on the board? So I hope we get, we, our board is is almost entirely turned over, we have a lot of very new members. So hopefully, K Council can give a little bit of direction to all of our our new board members on what you would like to see. Happen and and what you'd like the board to bring back to you and and hopefully we'll have a student representative here soon.
Great, thanks guys.
Thanks, Ingrid.
Charlie.
First of all, I want to thank the Brianna who's leaving and the new board members for joining, those who are continuing for your service to the city. I'm really excited about this board, I think when it got started, it was, you know, as the Art Council issues are happening and. I think this board has made a lot of progress over the years and I'm really excited about what I'm hearing here. Thank you, Stephanie, for a very good summary of what you guys are up to. I don't have any real ideas for future of what you, you know, should be doing, you know, what you're talking about. I think pursuing the plans you have, and I think if there's a way we could get you invested in public program projects. We're going to be doing some kind of public landscape or something like that and talking about art placement, it's a great idea. I originally raised my hand, you guys are talking about the Art Walk and, you know, in addition to what I think John said, maybe have a mural on the. The building by the Coven Bethel Lot, that that might be a good idea, but also if we get a brochure where that art, once you get the idea where it is. We get a brochure or a map or something, I think it'd be really good to place that at the visitor center. I'm sure the Chamber and the Tourism Board would be happy to have that brochure there as well. So that's where a lot of people go to find out things to do in the city, be a good way to, you know, have the Glenwood Springs Art Board. You know, this is the Art Walk that we have and we recommend, so anyway, thank you all for your service, I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Charlie. Steven and Shelley.
I just wanted to comment quickly on the comment made about the hideous wall next to Bethel Lot. And that particular wall has actually been part of our discussion. I know at council and at the DDA. For at least four years now to do some kind of a mural or something there. And we just never, everybody always thinks that's a great idea, but nobody ever carries the ball and it just hadn't. We haven't been able to move anything forward there, I would really encourage this art board to try to do something there. You know, all of you, if you ever get to Denver and have time, you really ought to walk around. The Rhino Art District of of Downtown Denver, which is constantly changing. Wall murals down there and it, it always draws me back in to spend a day to just see what's new and what's different. And just some glorious work, it'd be great to have a piece of that in Glenwood.
Yeah, that is a great, I mean, kind of the rediscovery for people that come here a lot, or again, for us locals, we'd like to appeal to ourselves too. Well, let's see if we can get that pushed forward, we're in the. We're a group of people, even with all our different backgrounds that walk down the street and say, God, that wall is so blank, it's something, we could do something with that wall. So we're, we're of the mind to maybe get you what you need there. And Brianna, I want to give, I mean, I could talk about her for half an hour because she's so talented and you guys are so lucky now that you have her. But I mean, she was very good at and sort of showed me how to, well, Brian does it, but we communicate with the DDA a lot too. So again, let's talk about some things that that aren't coordinated and when we talk to them. About things that you wouldn't think are overlapping, that have to do with the overall appeal of the city or how something looks. And so that's something we will keep doing, is having Laura Kirk at our meetings every once in a while.
I just wanted, Jen wanted to share something about that wall as well.
I just wanted to remind everybody that we have put in for an NEA grant, we haven't heard back yet, but it's for the creation of those kind of large scale murals. A wall of that size would certainly require, even if you were just to do part of the wall, would require scaffolding and. So we have put together and Terry helped us and Laura get some good estimates of what. The the cost to do some of these larger mural spaces would be. And hopefully, fingers crossed, NEA will be interested in in funding that, so that's not the only location. There are several that are kind of in that. So that's not the only location. Um, there are several that are kind of in that, um, along that block 44 alley. And then turning the corner on to Cooper. And if, if we don't get that grant, then we will have to revise our plans. Because I do think that there are a lot, there is a lot of interest in doing something on that wall. And I think it, even though it's not large, there are two very cute winged murals on that wall now. So I will say that as well.
Yeah, that's right. Now I'm telling you, with this dog, I see everything now. He hasn't peed on the wings. The wings are very fun.
I would say just real quick that we don't want to do anything too dramatic there since at some point there's going to be a building on that lot. Right, Jen? That's hopeful. That's not necessarily, there's nothing in plans. Uh, sorry. Shelley, go ahead.
I just wanted to quick say that I'm really excited about this board. We have a lot of new members, a lot of new energy. And the board's done great on the past couple of years of getting organized and getting now this art plan, which should be wrapping up pretty soon. So, um, I am excited about the website idea also. And whether or not it should be a city website or some type of a, a citywide collaboration between different arts organizations. And then it might have its own identity for the, really get the Glenwood's art scene kind of building a lot of energy around that. I think that, that remains to be put together. But hopefully we can find some funding for that. And lastly, I'd like to say Brian and Karsten just do a fantastic job supporting this board and working with them. So thanks to everybody and looking forward to the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Councilor Davis, last word.
And lastly, I would like to say that, you know, I think if somebody was working on a wall project like that, that there's some local sponsorship that could be available from downtown businesses. And I know if you need scaffolding, uh, I know where there is tons of scaffolding sitting around doing absolutely nothing that could be loaned out for nothing as well. So, uh, get ahold of me and I can make that happen.
Well, that's good.
All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody. We really, uh, it's been said a number of times that we really appreciate your, your dedication, your service. Uh, you know, this board was formed, I think, what, like two years ago, maybe? And, um, you know, it's a great group, a lot of, a lot of new faces and, and a lot of energy. So thank you very much for doing this, participating. And if for no other reason than to get back at the former mayor, Mike Amba, if we could put in a statue of an astronaut and no statues of any bronze figurines, that would make my heart very happy. That's all I know about art.
I wrote it down.
Okay. That's inside joke for Shelley, probably. We, we, we endured a number of meetings where Mike Amba was, if we could only get this. So anyway, I'm just joking. If we have some great bronze busts of notable figures, then fantastic.
You're going to be first, Jonathan.
I said notable, not infamous.
Oh, okay.
Is there anybody else? Guys, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Uh, council will be back here in an hour and 15 minutes. Enjoy your dinner.
Okay. What do you need, babe? He's in my, in my car.